recall that, but then once our new Parks Coordinator came on board, he and Commissioner Boyce had some issues as well. And he asked to be moved and have his liaison changed. The Board voted to make it Commissioner Gold. At that time, as you may or may not know, what a liaison's job is, is of course, in my, in my explanation of it would be, your department head comes to you as liaison with a potential issue. If that doesn't work, then it goes to the Board or to the next high up. If an employee has an issue, they go to their department head. Their department head then takes it to the liaison. Liaison brings it to the Board. On several occasions, it seemed as though Mr. Commissioner, Board Chair at that time, Commissioner Boyce was what I called getting out of his lane. He was still interceding and communicating with some people at the park that had been asked to not communicate with him any longer over a period of time, had been asked not to communicate with him any longer to contact.
Commissioner Gold.
Commissioner Gold and then to contact, actually the Director of Operations. I misspoke a while ago. They go to the Director of Operations and then the liaison and then the Board. So they were directed to contact, if they didn't want to talk to the Parks Coordinator, to contact Director of Operations at that time with Schmelzer. And then if that didn't work, to go to liaison and then it would come to the Board. We asked Commissioner Boyce on several occasions to not interfere any further, to leave it alone. If the Meekins called him or some other people, anyone from Parks called him, to please refer them. If he didn't want to speak directly to the Parks Coordinator, to refer them to the liaison or the Director of Operations and to the liaison. And if they couldn't find any remedy, remedy to bring it then to the Board. It seemed as though Commissioner Boyce continued to answer directly and have them directly answer to him on some issues, which he might have deemed as an emergency, but others didn't. That's, that's another argument. The Board asked him on two occasions, one in executive session and one in open session, to no longer do that, please, of which he continued over time to do that. I spoke with Council Huddle on one occasion about that, how we could deal with that. And he said, I'd really like to stay neutral on this. Perhaps you could call CIS and ask their opinion. I called CIS. They spoke with me directly on it. And in fear of a lawsuit for the county, because this person was starting to say that he was feeling, he was, he had, he had some physical issues that he was feeling Commissioner Boyce was picking on. He felt as though Commissioner Boyce was overstepping his bounds as a commissioner. And I started to feel as though we could be putting the county liable for a lawsuit. And I want to say it wasn't only with this person. Because if you read the language of the censor, it not only deals with parks, it says, and others. Because there are others that were, have asked to be removed from as liaison, to have Commissioner Boyce as their liaison. There are other people that have been complaining to me as Board Chair, making statements about they feel they were unfairly treated from Commissioner Boyce or talked down to from Commissioner Boyce. So to protect the county, I asked CIS, what's the best thing we can do? And they said to me, your first step is to censor the Commissioner. At that time, I asked County Council, his opinion, or I relayed to County Council what CIS had told me and asked him if he would feel comfortable to write the order. I walked away from it at that point and County Council wrote the order. That is to protect the, the censor was to protect the citizens of Curry County and from a lawsuit, potential lawsuit, from some employees that are getting ready to file suit against a Commissioner. And it protects us from a future lawsuit.
Can I add something? Not real quick?
Yes.
Is this something we should be talking about in executive session? I, I'm kind of getting a little bit of a.
It's a.
Feeling in my pit of my stomach that.
So here's where we are, if I may.
Well, no.
That's a, that's a great question. So if you want to follow up on that, go ahead.
Well, I just, you know.
Originally, so you know, originally, I asked.
Let him finish, please.
Well, I just, I was just thinking, shouldn't this be talked about in executive session?
And that's what I'm going to give you your answer to. Originally, I asked to have it all talked about in executive session. That's why we talked about it in executive session the first time. Commissioner Boyce told Ms. Schmelzer this should be dealt with in open session so the citizens of this county are fully aware of what this Board is trying to do to him. So then we talked about it in an open session. And if you would like to bring it back to executive session.
Did you have anything else?
I'm willing to do that.
So, Commissioner Pash, did you read the, the four documents that I included in the RS?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And that didn't change your mind at all?
No.
Okay. So, Commissioner Herzog, this is why we don't have a county administrator. Okay? There's been so many things launched out there. And Commissioner Pash is doing it again today. Some assumptions, people come to him threatening to quit. I hear it all the time. Okay, I'm just going to give one example. Administrator Ward, I sent an email, put a health administrator ward that basically said, hey, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt. Help me understand here, is this something the state, we're not having daily, and I have the email, of course, we're not having daily COVID reports anymore? Is this something the state is requiring? We're, we're having weekly press releases. And I said, I, you know, I know that's the best thing for the citizens. As a Commissioner, I'm uncomfortable with that. Help me out here. I've got 20 emails that I've sent to Administrator Ward that give her tremendous encouragement and appreciation every time I got a press release. Go, you're doing a terrific job, et cetera. But Commissioner Pash reported to the citizens that I was challenging her on her job performance. Just absolutely false, absolutely false. And the email will bear that out. Now, she did come into my office upset and I think we did our best to work it out and clarify. And so when you look at the documentation, it's, I think, most neutral people, and in fact, now I'm under an investigation on the mask wearing requirement, costing the county thousands of dollars. If you don't go along, now that's been with at least two of the four Director of Operations we've had in three and a half years. If you don't go along with them, you're going to pay a price. There is a bureaucracy growing here that I've been accused of somebody moving away from my office because I'm directing them. And I was so shocked. In fact, that person moved to the best office Curry County has, except for the Sheriff's Office, is on the corner of the jail building. And so, you know, I'm being censored, just like I was sued. And you know what the judge did to that? You know what happened to the ethics violation? Seven to two boards said, took them about 15, 20 minutes. And so this, I've said to you, Commissioner Pash, this is tearing our county up. I begged you to do a full review. And now I'm shocked that you say you thoroughly read that information and you believe that I acted inappropriately, put this county at risk. The county was at risk with two prior camp hosts. You can't, I don't know how anybody could possibly deny it, how they were treated, and you bet I stood up for them. So if you want to throw me under the bus, bulldoze me off the cliff, you're trying, but sooner or later, the information is going to go, get out there. So I'm asking the Board to reverse this censor and start over. And please, you know, I've got hundreds of pages of documentation that if you really think that I am not callous to our employees, that you won't take the time to read that, but yet, what has happened here? What has happened here? This is not a due process. This is prove your innocence. Okay? Not their responsibility to prove that I'm guilty. So they just sic ethics violations on me. They sic investigations on me. They take me to, to court and they get their hands handed to them every time. And it's a tragedy and I'm going to keep fighting because, and I'll bring that up in Commissioner's comments, why I'm fighting, because we have, we have a new direction that we can go this year. I don't know if it's going to be with the Director of Operations or without, where the liaison positions are going to be, but we have to roll up our sleeves. And if we don't, and if we're going to be continually sidetracked with this crap, forgive me, continually sidetracked for political reasons, then you ain't seen nothing yet. Thank you, that's all I got. And yes, we're going to go into executive session with this down the road. You know, if you want to keep me under that cloud for an indefinite period of time, when you know how the effort I put out for this county, I'm here every day. You want to keep me under that cloud? It's going to, it's not going to work long term. People find the truth and just get into the surface. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
To finish on my comment, Commissioner Boyce made a comment that there was an illegal meeting between Commissioner Gold and I. There wasn't. I, that morning, Commissioner Gold walked past my office and I was talking with someone else about the censor and I told her there was going to probably be a censor. And as she walked past, she shook some notes at me and she said, I got some things to say too. That was the extent of the meeting. It was, commissioners can talk, we can talk amongst ourselves as long as we don't make a ruling or a decision about something, a final, you know, plan to make a final decision. We can talk, we can talk about a lot of things. So what we did was not an illegal meeting as she walked past my office. I, I further want to say, the reason I didn't put it on the agenda as a AGRS, I had hopes that when the Parks gentleman came that morning, that Commissioner Boyce would say, you know what, and we brought it up again. I had hoped that Commissioner Boyce would say, you know what, I kind of been out of my lane on this. I'd like to say I'm sorry, or you know what, I've been out of my lane and I'm going to stop doing that. Commissioner Gold, yes, you're the, the liaison for this and let's move on. And I think, I'm not sure, but I believe I told Council Huddle that when we wrote the, when we, when he started to write on the order. My intention was if he did that, that censor would have been in the back of my file, would never have been read. When the argument continued, I felt it necessary to protect the county and do the censor.
If you wanted to protect the county, Commissioner Pash, you would have immediately looked for an independent review of what happened in the parks system. You would not have let those people hang out dry because of your political dislike of me. Okay? Mr. Herzog, I want, I didn't mean to point, sorry. I want to challenge you. The four years are going to be here. Don't ever have a meeting, an agenda item, you pop out there in the middle of nowhere without any, at least 24 hours notice. Anybody that thinks that's ethical and right and best for the citizens, I just strongly disagree. And I promise the citizens, if I'd have done that, oh my gosh, there would have been another lawsuit. But that's where we are here. And so we've spent, it's four minutes to 12 now, we've spent how much time on this? Maybe the censor should stay, you know? If nobody cares enough, excuse me, that's not fair. If nobody sees the injustice and I proved my innocence just in those four pages or four documents, multiple pages, they don't think I proved my innocence? Yeah, you can hang me. And so I, I think it's a travesty and I think it's unfortunate and I think it all could have easily been avoided, easily been avoided. But no, there was a political aspect to this that is pervasive and you know the rest of the story. Here we are. Didn't have to happen. Terrible. Could have been avoided in the very beginning when I, when I asked Director Schmelzer, hey, we need to get these people moved. The documents are all there, to space 18. Meanwhile, she gets a broken rib, the park host lady, and nobody cares. I'm just appalled. I mean, I went through Mr. Rickert, I went through the parks host, I went through everybody. Said, can you help me with this? Commissioner Gold wasn't even here involved in it. This parks liaison. Okay. So what are we going to do?
It's your agenda item.
Well, I'm not going to make a motion to remove the censors. So one of you has to do that or we're going to be here. We'll just keep it so that we can pretend like Boyce is really, go ahead.
I will make a motion to do away with this censure on the basic fact that we have a new Board, new Board member. And I want to start off with, you know, clean slate. I think we, you know, this was brought up again. It didn't have to be in, in the open, open meeting, but it is. So personally, as a, as a new Commissioner, I want to be open and I want everybody to be transparent and moving forward. But we do, you know, and John has shared with me, Council has shared that we, you know, you have to be careful about what, what you say, John, because I, even after the first break, I was going to ask Chris a question and, and it would, you know, and so anyway, that's, that's my motion. We're going to, that we start off on a brand new slate, there is no censure. And, and that's it.
So do we have a second? So I'll second that. Over for discussion?
Yes.
Nope? Did you say something, JJ? Oh, we got people, did you say something, Staff Jesuit?
Oh, no.
Somebody from the audience? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Pash, please.
This is, this isn't about starting off the new year. This is about something that transpired last year. And the censure is to protect the county, not to pick on Commissioner Boyce. It protects the county from future lawsuits against us that we do not and will not be liable for comments and actions made by Commissioner Boyce, as he's been warned many times, not to get out of his lane and he continued to do that. So this, that's what the censure does, is it protects the county from future lawsuits that of Mr. Boy, Commissioner Boyce, for actions he may take with a department. And I would also like to say this, this is something that you're coming in as a new Commissioner. I would welcome you. I think we would, we need to find a way to do this because so many people here are afraid for their jobs. They're afraid to speak up and say something for fear that they're going to be targeted and fired or found a reason to get rid of their position. I would even say that they may fear you, being open and honest with you, because they don't know.
Mr. Pash, this is a different subject and we've been down this road.
No, it's not.
Certainly it is.
So all I'm trying to say.
Give me some proof that I have intimidated employees here. Please give me some proof.
I wish someone would step forward. My whole point is this, I wish we could find a way for you to talk with employees or employees to express their concerns, not about Commissioner Boyce. Their concerns about the Board and people on the Board, and I say, me too. Express your concerns. If you feel I'm out of my lane, if you feel one of us is out of our lane, I don't know how we can come up with a way to do that, but our employees need to tell us the truth and find a way to do that. And, and I wish we could come up with a way to do that where it's somebody that's not biased to this Board or anyone that's involved with it.
Mediator.
And, go ahead.
Well, there, there are folks that do that. There, there was a guy who lived up Sixes River, Mary Jane LaBelle's husband, David, I can't remember, but he was a arbitrator and a mediator or just things just like that.
It starts by having the commissioners responsible to the departments and liaisons and not be isolated by a Director of Operations, as was Schroeder and Schmelzer. Yes? Council Huddle?
So I, I just want to talk about, you know, what, what the issue is here and what I understand the basis of the motion to be. The, the censure does have language in it. I pulled it up and was reviewing it. And it said that the Board reserves the right if any employees, based on the conduct identified in the censure or future conduct, in case any employees, it results in litigation, that the Board reserves the right to deny defense to Commissioner Boyce. So it speaks in a reservation of rights and reserving the ability to withhold defense in case of a lawsuit. That's in the censure, that's a matter of public record. But the, what I heard and what I saw in the materials is the Boyce's request for reconsideration was twofold. One, on the merits, that he was acting in an emergency because things could possibly happen to the Meekinses and things were going to happen to the facilities and even arguably for health emergency reasons. But the second argument in there was that procedurally, he, he thought he was, you know, it wasn't brought correctly and there was some procedural irregularities. My understanding of the motion was that you were not passing judgment on whether he did or did not act correctly, but you, your motion was based on the, the process that was used and therefore that would be your reason for wanting to undo the censure. I understand, Commissioner Pash, they were talking about a past event. You're just saying it's, you're not ruling on the event or the, what he did, but on the way it happened and that you would prefer not to have things done in that way and therefore you're wanting to undo the censure. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm, I'm trying to sift through everything that's in there, because a lot in there. So that's all I'm trying to figure out here.
So we have a motion and a second. Did I second?
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I can. So Staff Jesuit, roll call, please.
Mr. Pash.
Can I get another, what is the motion? Let's see here. Before I vote on it?
Motion by Commissioner Herzog to do away with censure because this is a new Board and start with a clean slate, clean slate. And he, parenthetically, Commissioner Herzog said this should have been handled in the executive session.
Roll call, please.
But that's not part of the motion. Discussion first?
Huh?
Discussion?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So just going, you know, from what John just said, Council Huddle. We have to, you know, this is, this is the new buzzword, is stay in your lane. So I'm going to, I'm going to jump in, I'm, to stay in mine. Stay in mine. And concerning liaisons, you, you know your role. We, I mean, I, I'm not even a liaison yet and I think I know that it goes from the Director of Operations or whatever, the department head, you know, employees to the department head, then to the county commissioner. So as long as we know how that all works, you know, I'm, I'm good with, with doing away with this as long as we, we don't get in, in the same trouble again.
If I may, Commissioner, didn't get out of my lanes. And I'll just refer you to the tons of documentations that will prove that, that have not been exposed here for the truth to be revealed. It's that simple. And it is drug us down. I don't need to keep repeating it. It is, it is ridiculous what's happened here. And so, yeah, I'm pushing back with everything I got. It's my reputation, it's the county's reputation, it's our capacity to work and be productive. I will stay in my lane, but that's not an admission that I got out of my lanes. I had no choice. I agree that when we get our liaisons, that there's a new, a new, a new revelation, whatever you want to call it, on what our responsibilities are, be here every morning from eight to whatever and get the work done. And I think this is the start to getting that done. And I would encourage everybody to contact me if they want full information, to see what the emails say, what the documents say. It's undeniable. So I'm really sticking my neck out there if I'm saying something that isn't accurate. And I want to verify and emphasize again that the due process is not you are guilty until proven innocent. It's the other way around in the United States of America. And it's so simple. This is so simple. It's not what you want to believe is what the facts are. So, go ahead.
One other discussion. Moving forward, I would like, you know, if, if something that, because I've read, I've read most of this. Moving forward, I think, I'm going to say that as a new Commissioner and I will, you know, you can always, I, I know that, I don't know the ins and outs of how we can talk to each other, but I think if, if you had this information and you could have got together somehow with the other two Commissioners, maybe not, maybe, maybe, maybe not. But I'm saying I, we got, we got to work together, the three of us, to, to cement in the public's eyes that we're working together. And, you know, you saw a need, obviously with the Parks and this, and the Parks Host and acted in the, you know, what you thought was the best. But I don't, I think the three of us need to make that decision. You know what I mean? Does that, does that make any sense at all?
Absolutely. That's, and that's, that's the route I took. Again, the documents will show that. And you know, you may be just the person to do the impossible here and pull this Board together. And it is imperative that we, that we do the work and that we follow you in that, in that lead and I'm sure willing.
I know a lot of it and even, you know, I tell my kids this, you got to be able to say, you got to get glad in the same pants you got mad in. So, you know, we're three type A gentlemen that, or we wouldn't be here. So we, but we're also adults enough to know that we have to get along and we have to move forward to the best interest. And so that's why I'm here. You know, my, my whole deal with being on the, on this Commission, in this Board of Commissioners, is to serve the county that I love it. And you guys, I, I see your passion for the county. I know you do. But we have to work together and, and do it correctly and decently and in order. And I think we can make great strides. George, help me out here.
Well, I'll wait for the Chair to recognize the Commissioner if that's okay with you.
Okay, John. Commissioner Herzog well said, and I heard every word you, every word you communicated there. Thank you, Commissioner Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Commissioner Herzog. I appreciate your enthusiasm for the, the job you have in W. I would recommend you spend some time with Council Huddle and get some updates on the requirements that I remember in place. And while I like the thought of having a lane, I think the responsibility of a Commissioner is sort of like being in rush hour traffic in Los Angeles. If you stay in one lane, you might technically not last very long. So I think it's important for the Board to consider the liaisons and the responsibility of those liaison Commissioner positions. But if you happen to be the only Commissioner in the office one day and you get a phone call and you don't take care of that call, and this goes for all of you, and I know you all know this, but, but I think it's important for the, maybe the citizens to realize it also, then the county could come under some responsibility if you fail to act. If you don't take the precautions that need to be taken. I've, I've read some of the information and I'm not going to take sides in this issue, but I would encourage you all to understand that as elected officials, you have a responsibility. And you have a responsibility to act on occasion when it may not be the popular thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Ms. Rose?
Nancy Sue Rose, Naseka Beach. I have been following this. Some of you know that for two years, I came to every single meeting here, every hearing. And then I stopped coming for a while, but I followed online most of the time. And I followed this issue of the censure very closely. And the thing is, what you said, Commissioner Rhodes, is, is true that sometimes there may be an emergency, but the person who should have been contacted first wasn't because of what Commissioner Boyce told the camp host to contact him instead of the person he was supposed to contact. And it isn't just this one issue that was censored. It was several different ones that were happening over a period of time. And so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Roll call, Staff Jesuit?
I have a comment.
We're going to have, we're going to have a roll call now.
I want to make a comment, please.
Vote, please.
I'd like to make a comment, please.
It is 12:15. It's time to have a vote. Sorry.
Not going to let me.
Not gonna let me make a comment.
No.
A lot of other public comments, sir, may I make a?
We've, we've, we've let you go plenty today, so it's time for a vote.
This is a new topic, sir.
Well, then you can come back at, we're gonna break to 1:15 after this vote.
It's just, this is a highly, a highly regular vote, sir, to undo, undo the will of the last Commission over this, when Commissioner Herzog's only had five minutes worth of testimony on it. This is highly, highly improper to do, sir.
Staff Jesuit?
And I will make my comment, you can talk over me if you'd like, but I would like to tell Commissioner Herzog, at the start of the read of the censure, I told Commissioner Boyce, I did not want to do this, I reached out to him to remain friends, and it actually hurt, I don't remember the exact words I used, but I absolutely did not want to read that censure into the record, but I felt it was necessary.
You threw two Camp Hosts under the bus because of your refusal, because of your refusal to get the facts.
Gotta have the last.
Here we are. We didn't listen to what you offered, maybe it'll come at another time, hopefully it will. Time for a vote, Mr. Herz, uh, Jesuit, please.
Mr. Pass?
No.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
You can vote on your own disciplinary problem.
Yeah.
You cannot vote on your own guilt or risk, sir, enough to conflict.
Yeah, you're, I'm sorry, you, you just have to disagree. Is that true?
There's a law, there's nothing about I have to disagree, this is law, sir.
Uh huh. Okay. Well, so we're gonna come back here, 1:15. Wait, did, we need to?
Can Commissioner Boyce vote?
He, um.
I said yes.
If he, if he, he makes his own decision on whether he votes under the conflict of interest rules. And usually they involve pecuniary benefit to him or his business, and I don't know that there's any pecuniary issue here respecting him under Chapter 244, so that's really the
And in that case, motion carried two to one.
See everybody, 1:15? Break, lunch.
That's how we know. We might not have recorded everything, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, we have two items, we have all contracts. Okay, so that is item, you have the right sequence?
Do you have your mic on? And then Eric said we might have started before we were on, so you might just want to take it from the top. Oh, wait, JJ, I think I started that one, is, is it?
We're not on, yeah, we're not on workshop yet, are we?
No, when you started though, we weren't, we weren't live, so you might want to just take it from the top.
Okay, Eric, if you can hear me there in the control room, welcome back everyone. We have a couple items left on our January 4th special meeting. Special meeting agenda, and then Commissioner comments. According to my information here, we have a proposal, contracts, all hires, is that correct? Is that next?
I think so.
You're the Chair. Volunteers and committee appointments. So we've been, we've been having a few hires, we've been having a few volunteers, committee appointees, and I just want to kind of clear the air and make sure that all these come before the Board and not before Director of Operations or County Administrator, and then, you know, there can be some, some issues developed from that, that, with, with Commissioners sometimes learn in late. So that's the reason for this discussion board. I assume you all want everything to go through, that's our job, that's part of our job description. Go ahead, Commissioner Pass.
Well, I think that's already in our current, what we currently have is that we approve all, we're the final approval of all hires and, and departures, final approval of all the, pretty much all the volunteers, I think everything on here. The only thing I would say is the Sheriff's Department, of course, is, is not included in this because the Sheriff's Department is the one that has to approve his hires, not us. And that's even to include deputies or front staff. I think the Sheriff's Department stands alone as the biggest figure in this county, he is this, I guess the, the ultimate boss of the county, and his, his office stands different than, than our county offices do. Am I understanding that rule correctly? And that's, go ahead, Council Huddle?
If you're asking about a rule, the sheriff, the rule is that the sheriff has final hiring authority, but that he must bring notice of the hires to the Board within 30 days, I think, of hiring, and he's been following that pretty good.
And that's in the form of an introduction, correct?
Yep, and, but the Board delegated, I think, that authority to him. Well, I, yeah, and then there's also a statute that says he's in charge of all the people in his, in his office. But the, I, I, let me, I'm playing catch up here on this item, all contracts, so we also have, we also have a rule in our purchasing rules that contracts up to $10,000 in both the Roads Department by the Roadmaster and in every other department by the Director of Operations. And prior to that, it was the Finance Director. So then, once we got a Director of Operations, changed to Director of Operations. And then the only other thing I can think of is there was like this one-off where we, I think within the last year, they appointed to the Director of Operations the Camp Host hires, before that, I think it was the Board. So that's really the only three things, but when you say all contracts, I think Commissioner Pass is right, you do approve all hires except for Sheriff, and you do all contracts except for $10,000, and then the only hire, I guess, you don't other approve is Camp Hosts for, from a Board order within the last year, I think.
So good summary. Questions? So we would be targeting then just specific to volunteers, like Camp Hosts? Or unless we wanted to include all contracts and not just the $10,000 minimum?
Yeah, and then, by the way, that $10,000 limit is actually kind of old. The state law currently allows up to, I think, $150,000 without competitive procurement. Some places, and, and we actually, the last time we looked at this was to delegate more authority for contracting to the Director or County Administrator perhaps at that point, and the Board decided to keep it at 10. So, but that's all a Board decision, more, less, none, however you want to do it.
So my preference is to have all contracts come before the Board, and, because we're the ones solely responsible, short term, long term, and I think it's good business because that's what we're hired to do, and we have to do our homework and be available for that, then we want to, go ahead.
I think just administratively, that's tricky, the Board meets every two weeks, sometimes contracts, you know, especially small things, need to be done quicker, and, I mean, I just want to make the Board aware that it will make it slower to get contracts approved, and that's all. And you might want to hear from some of your staff or maybe have a review of, you know, what contracts are typically approved without Board, and what kind of, what, what would it be, what would it be if the Board approved them all, just so, you know, you do that. I, I understand the philosophy, and Commissioner Boyce, you're speaking from, straight from statute, under the statute, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for all matters of county business, and so the starting point is you guys are responsible for everything, and in the past, the Board has delegated, and if you're gonna undelegate, you might want to, you know, take some input on that.
Thank you. You, you've been here almost five years, how often is it that we actually would get a contract that we couldn't, we couldn't schedule in plenty of time ahead? Would that be fairly common? And who would, who would approve that if we didn't have a Director of Operations?
Right, well, before it was Director of Operations, it was the Finance Officer.
Okay.
And so, and then I review, so our contract rules, we can go over that, but our contract rules, I review every contract, and then whether the Board approves it or somebody else approves it. And then, prior to my arrival, for, I think, a pretty good long time, it was, and when I say I, I mean the County Council, and that's prior to my arrival as well, it's in our contracting rules, and then prior to my time, it was the, the Contracting Officer, which the Board had designated as the Finance Director, and actually, or, excuse me, County Accountant, because we didn't have a Finance Director even. And then, a few, within the last few years, the Board changed the County Accountant to the County Administrator, and then that got changed to Director of Operations. But bottom line is, you, the, for a long time, the county has always had a non-Board member approve contracts up to $10,000, and the Road Department has approved them up to $10,000 for a long time. What would happen fast, I, I don't know, a lot of times it's, well, similar things to, I don't want to pick a scab here, but let's say we had a pipe break and there was a water leak, and let's say it wasn't even an emergency, but it was water that we needed to drink or use to do things with. We wouldn't want to wait two weeks to get somebody on that, and typically, a simple repair like that is probably going to be below 10 grand, and so usually, so then, in my experience, it would be like a facilities maintenance person would call around and, and also under, under the law, a contract under $10,000, you don't even have, need to make three calls, you can just call somebody, say, I need to get over here and fix this pipe. And so, again, that's just a, off the top of my head example of where it comes in handy. I don't know, you know, Director of Operations, if you have anything to add to that, and Jim, you don't do too many below $10,000 contracts, I don't think, and maybe other Commissioner Rhodes would know, but.
Very helpful, I, I don't think, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add something, since I've been here, I have signed a few contracts, just in the short time that I've been here. One was to, was just recently, so that we could get W2s printed out on time and, and get those out by the federal deadline. Waiting on that, you know, may have put us in jeopardy there, so.
So I, I don't have to be real persistent on this, you know, something we can just keep an eye on, I think, I would prefer just one Commissioner to have a, a report, a staff report on that, when you do have to make those contract approvals, even if it's after the fact. And we may be doing that, although not real consistent, I don't think, I just want the public to know that we, go ahead.
And I typically try to do that in my Director's Reports.
Okay.
If there is anything that I sign, or, or give the Board upfront warning of that, I'm going to do it if the timing allows.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pass?
I will also say, like liaison for the Road Department, you know, Mr. Christiansen, he always emails me or calls me and says, look, I got this going on, I gotta fix this, I got a machine down, I got something going on, I gotta fix it, I know I got the authority to do it, but I just want to let you know.
So we've brought some, that's, that's good.
I didn't mean to cut you off there.
It's fine.
Is that it? Okay. So we've got, we've brought some good public awareness, the public knows that we're watching this even closer, we're not suggesting there's been anything wrong, to the contrary, it's just gonna, it's just a matter of who's going to be doing it in the future, and are, are the Commissioners going to be consistently notified? So I'm fine with that. When it comes to volunteers, hires, other than the Sheriff's Department, yes, Camp Hosts, I want all that to go before the Board, that's, that's my strong preference and request to this Board. So who else is gonna prove it if we don't?
So it's not happening right now? Currently, Camp Host approval was delegated to the Director of Operations, again, my recollections within the last year, could be within the last two years. But prior to, prior to that, it was Board, Board action, and it was only Board action because it was not delegated to anyone else. So it went under the giant umbrella of the Board of Commissioners oversees all matters of county business, and then, or county concern is what the statute says, and unless you delegate it out. That one had not been delegated out before, and so the Board was doing them.
Just again, the Commissioners are responsible, and I think there could have been some real conflict avoided, had the Board had that option. So that's, that's a pretty important one to me, not to learn again after the fact, so do we need to bring back an order on that, propose it to the Board?
I think the delegation was by order, and the general rule is the way to undo something is the same way you did it, so if you're gonna undo that delegation, you would then do an order, basically rescinding the order.
Okay, we can move on then, we'll, I'll work on that. Unless anything else, discussion? I'll take that as a no.
Yeah.
Okay, liaison roles, yeah, we forgot, oh, that's your, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you take the lead there, Director Rickert.
Okay. So, again, just like with electing the Chair and the Vice Chair every year at this time, the liaison assignments are discussed and possibly reorganized. In the packet, I have included what those liaison assignments currently are, and Commissioner Boyce did do his own proposal, and I, I included that as well, so we've already had some discussion on this, but some of that discussion has been to leave it the way it is for a certain period of time, but it is up to you three, how do you want to handle that?
So we have, I think you and I have the same one, don't we? I'm looking at the 2021 here. It does have, we could start at the bottom and just have a discussion here and maybe some, some requests, preferences, however the Board wants to proceed. Yes, we did forget Road Department, I did. And County Council. Do you need supervision?
The Board has, the Board has wavered on that. In the past, I did have a liaison, I think the last Board eliminated the County Council liaison position, nope, I'm under, I was under Sue Gold at the last one, so you hadn't eliminated it. My, you know, I, I feel like I serve all the Commissioners and that, you know, you all have access to me, but I think Sue drew the short straw and then had to do my, had to do my eval. So, so anyway, you could include a liaison for County Council, I don't mind, however, however you guys want to do that.
Commissioner Pass?
Well, just in some, I'm, I'm hoping just some tidying up here, we've also got two SWOT, you've put on yours to have Commissioner Herzog and myself on SWOT. I see a new Curry Cities, comma, Ports, comma, Libraries, that is not on here, so there's something that I don't know. You've also got both Atlanta, Health.
We just do one at a time, could we?
Okay, sure.
So we were at County Council, and then we, I'm gonna give you the floor to pick whatever one you want to go there.
There's also Rhodes, I think, right?
Pardon me?
Those are Rhodes, too?
Yes, yeah, so those are two we need to designate, I think.
Well, again, I have relationships with these people, I, I would urge you to call them, and if they're unsatisfied with me being their liaison, then of course I would be more than willing to give them up and hopefully find a Commissioner that they would have a better relationship with. I personally believe, I'm a pilot and with aviation, so I, I really don't have a lot to do with the airports, other than we were working with the airport up north of Port Orford on some, an ILS approach there, which since COVID has come in, we've fallen apart on being a veteran, and I'd like to keep those services, I have a relationship with, with our veterans, I believe, I'm also on the, a member of the Marine Attachment here in Curry County. Our Finance, I have, I don't have degrees, but I have a, a life's history in Finance, Treasurer's Office, our Sheriff's Department I work very closely with, our Road Department I work closely with, Emergency Service has gone to the Sheriff's Department, so that's, that's a moot point, and the Fair, and the Clerk's Office, so I, I mean, I have relationships with those people now, if one of those doesn't want me, why don't we do this? If, why don't we ask the different departments that we're acting for liaisons to, to write in and say who they would prefer their liaison to be? That would be a great way to do it, then they could give us a list of who they'd like to see, one, two, three, and then we could, we could do that. County, Council, or, I, I don't have the, the authority to say that, but Council's raising his hand, Chair. County Council.
Thank you. And this is the relationship between, you know, the Board and the Departments, and, you know, we currently also have another link in that chain between the Boards and the Departments, and that's our Director of Operations, and I was, I, wasn't clear to me, but I'm assuming he would be included, and maybe, maybe the communication could go through him and he could amass it and put together, you know, the stuff. the stuff. Maybe that's what you're talking about, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that there's recognition there. But, you know, again, however you want to do it, but who would they submit it to if they're going to do that?
So I just want one quick comment, and then, yeah, I saw. Thank you. Wherever there's a notion that if I don't like a certain Commissioner, I can just say, "I want somebody else." It doesn't work that way in other counties. It's not a popularity contest. Our responsibility is for strong oversight. You know, this notion that I can't get along with people, it just ain't so. And, you know, again, you got to refer back to the documents. So the other part of that was that it was good for the Commissioners to rotate. Obviously, I have a tremendous interest in law enforcement, and that record is clear. I've been here for four years. I've never been on the Sheriff's deal, for example. And then, you know, you could just go down one or the other. You know, I'm not going to ask, I am not going to ask, and put you in a tough position of, "Hey, how do you like Commissioner Johnson? You sure you don't need somebody else?" That's what's happened here. And it's been detrimental to the responsibility of Commissioners, and then I was isolated from two different county administrators. I just don't go along. That's not what I'm paid to do. So, you know, I defer to Assessor Cohen gladly here, but I'm already seeing a little bit of a breakdown, and this may need a workshop. I think somebody else recommended that prior. Assessor Cohen, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you. With regard liaison Commissioners, you know, there was some earlier discussion about holding this off for 90 days, and I don't know that that's really necessary. I've seen a lot of passboards work with determining who the liaisons are, and there's not always agreement about which Commissioners would give which Departments, but they usually dispense with the conversation within a week or two after a new Commissioner is sworn in. And there's always been a new Commissioner sworn in, at least in the 32 years that I've been doing this. The idea of having Department Heads or elected officials select their own Commissioner that they like the best, the only time I ever got a Commissioner that I liked was when Commissioner Rhodes was my... Actually, I don't know if Commissioner Rhodes was ever my liaison Commissioner, but I would say that, you, as an elected official, I mean, one of the things here is, you know, I've seen some resistance by elected officials in the past of having a liaison Commissioner because, you know, we're responsible for our own Departments. We're responsible to the people of the county, just as much as you are. I've never minded having a liaison Commissioner for the Assessor's Office. In fact, I value having a liaison Commissioner with the Assessor's Office, because oftentimes, the liaison to the Assessor's Office will be the liaison sits on the Board of Property Tax Appeals. And I actually like that education rotating through the Board of Commissioners. And if something like that is beneficial to the Assessor's Office, I would think it would be beneficial to other Departments, because, you know, the year you spend as a liaison to, to the Assessor, you know, I'm hoping that you're learning something, too, and then maybe the next year, you're moving on to the Road Department, and hopefully you're learning something there. But the fact is, you're getting a more well-rounded idea of what all goes on in county government, and certainly, I, we do like to say that, you know, Commissioners are welcome to come and see us whenever they have questions. So I like the idea of doing some rotation. You know, in this case, I also like the idea of the three of you getting together in a workshop to discuss which Departments, you know, I mean, you can see amongst the three of you that some of you have some real preferences as to where you'd like to be. That's not the first time that's happened in the last 32 years either. I mean, there's been some disagreement. Usually works out. So, one, I don't think you need to wait 90 days. Two, I like to see the rotation.
Thank you, Mr. Assessor. Well, it's 1:40 now, so we've got about 20 minutes to finish up. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing the Board sense that, or I'm sensing the Board wants to put this into a workshop, and fairly soon?
Yeah.
Probably can't happen, well, definitely can't happen Wednesday, so it would be the 20th. And what I would like to say to all the Department Heads, less the elected officials, because it's not mandatory, but I think the Department Heads, until the 20th, if they have issues and the full Board isn't available, then they should just come to whoever they're comfortable with, and I think that's just a good policy, and it's likewise part of the learning experience that we have to, and it is part of the rotation that we know is good for, good for all of us. Did you have something?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm in favor of the workshop, though. I think that's good.
Okay, so we're tentatively looking at January 20th, 2 o'clock. Add that to the workshop.
10:40 there, JJ?
10:40 what?
10:40. You notice that?
I don't know if we have a consensus here, but I think we do. I didn't hear from you, Commissioner Pash.
You've already got two, but yes, that's fine. You had a consensus, but yes, that's fine.
Okay. So does that conclude? Let's see, who's first on the Commissioner Reports?
Well, we were going to do A at the end of H.
Whoops, excuse me. Go ahead, Director Rickert.
So, do we still want to do this now, or do we want to wait till the workshop?
Which one is it?
So it's 6A, Order Appointing Board Member to Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. So it was with Commissioner Gold. It is without that member at this point. Do we want to elect Commissioner Herzog to that, to that post at this point?
What does it consist of, Brad?
I don't know.
Amazing and impressive. I have been there. I was the liaison for them, and again, it was a little inconvenient for me. It's held at like 3 o'clock in the afternoon in Crescent City. It's very easy to get in and out of. They have actually a wonderful venue that they do it in. Big fluffy seats. It usually takes about an hour, and it's basically a very quick financial report, status of what's happening with the airport, as you may or may not know. They just built the new building down there. Mr. Milliman was very involved in that as well. So it's just basically a meeting like this that lasts 45 minutes to an hour. Like I say, if I used to leave here at 2 o'clock, I'd be there for the meeting, and then after you could just basically go home. You don't have to come all the way back up here, so it was, it was pretty simple to do, and it's a, it's a good group of people.
Once a month meeting?
I'm going to say it's once a month, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would do that. And, you know, unless you want to.
No, it's fine.
But I am, you know, hour closer back and forth, so...
There's your answer. Board, Chair?
Looking for a motion. It's an action item, isn't it?
So moved.
I could have seconded, I'm sorry.
Right.
Looking for papers there. Any further discussion? The Crescent Airport is awesome, and you being that close, and it's really important to South County in particular with the, you know, there are ups and downs commercially, but again, very important to 60% of our population, so good, good for you.
And I will say also, if I could, Chair?
Yeah.
They also wanted to work with me in coordination with the airport in North County and coordinating to help get...
LIGO?
Yes, to get federal support for that ILS approach, and we needed to add a taxiway onto that runway so that we could actually get C-130s to come in there.
Yeah.
And commercial traffic as well. So they were going to also work with us to not pressure, but encourage the FAA to add an ILS to that airport, so it might want to be a discussion you have with them.
Yeah.
No further discussion? Assessor Cohen on this one?
No, no, not on this one.
Okay. Call for question, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Hi.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Hi.
Motion carried unanimously.
What else am I overlooking?
There's no next one.
Okay.
I think you moved the consent agenda item down to 6A.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, okay. Let me get there real quick.
JJ, hold on.
What the consent agenda item is, is Diane Schofield moved from Port Orford to Brookings, I believe, and then Aaron Johnson moved from South County to Central County. We're not nominating, there's no applications in it, it's just two people moving around.
Oh.
Why didn't I think of that?
By the way, asked for applications back in August and received zero.
Yeah, and they're good, good committee members, so we could, I'm going to ask the Board to consider a vote on this and make it an action item. Or do we need a motion?
Need a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion then, that we approve the location transfer between Aaron Johnson and Diane Schofield for the Curry County Tourism and Promotion Committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pash?
Hi.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Hi.
Motion carried unanimously.
We've got about 15 minutes. What's next?
Commissioner Upates next.
Who's first?
Commissioner Herzog.
Oh, really? I'm so dizzy, my head is spinning like a whirlwind. It never ends. No, I don't, I have no, nothing to, just trying to absorb it all.
Am I next? Thank you. That's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. Commissioner Pash, next?
No, you're next.
Okay. So, talking to a friend earlier yesterday, I'm going to take my mask off. With what's going on, the federal government, you know, all the, the breakdown of the Republicans with President Trump on the fees, the CARES relief, all the money going overseas, people hurt, wounded, whether it's $600 or $2,000 to each individual American, and federal employees would get either the $600 or $2,000. They've not, they've not been laid off, so there's been a real concern the money's not been properly targeted. So when it comes to the state level, with the challenge that the Governor had, basically saying, and I've been very supportive of her publicly, privately, direct, consistently, with everything that she and her staff have dealt with, and I give her, you heard me say last meeting, I give her staff high marks, and I'm grateful. But when she said basically, "Don't defy my executive order," and this is part of what our important workshop item is to be discussed on Curry Economic Sanctuary County, she's basically saying, "Here's what's going to happen." So I worked over the weekend to put out a letter, and I sent it to almost every Commissioner in the state. I admit, the timing of the weekend, New Year's weekend, wasn't the best, but her executive order came out on the, on the 31st. And I'm going to read you what I think the response is. Some of you, most of you are aware that she has $800 million that she is promising, and I brought this up, and I won't read her executive order and her warning not to defy. But the $800 million was targeted primarily for landlords and tenants, community development, certainly vaccine distribution, the plans there, all good stuff, no argument. But I about fell out of my chair when I realized, like the federal government, both the House and the Senate not coming up with a plan for the small businesses that we're losing, and then the state does the same thing. We're losing our companies. There's some that aren't even going to be open more than a few more days, and it is staggering. It is heartbreaking. It is right there in front of us, and we've got that $800 million, which probably would be about $3 million for Curry County, that we could, that we could precisely distribute to those businesses. If we're going to tell them, "You cannot open up. If you do, we're going to pull your liquor license. If you do, we're going to pull your health license, your environmental health license." So here's what I wrote. I'm getting some support. I needed to work on it this morning, but obviously that wasn't possible. But regarding Governor Brown press release, by the way, this went out to Alex Campbell, Leah Horner, Jason Minor, I up in her office, and the Governor Brown press release responding to planned defiance of COVID-19 executive orders. Everyone is aware that 2020 was an unbelievably tough time for Oregon and our country. I'm talking with very men, excuse me, I'm talking with many very responsible and dedicated public servants and business leaders. We are, we all share a concern for where the latest executive order could be taking us into that likely unfortunate conclusion. The risk is too great. I've got an underline here, I can't imagine, I've got a son that's been to OSP for 20 years, I can't imagine our Oregon State Police, the pride of Western US law enforcement, perhaps being put in this impossible situation, worst-case scenario, knocking on doors of businesses that are trying desperately to survive. This critical time in our history does not have to be a classic conflict between rural and metro Oregon. The best way to avoid the growing tension is for everyone to have a cool and calm approach in collectively solving this issue. Oregon must join together. It is simple, in my view. We have to target a good portion, reasonable portion of the $800 million relief funds as originally intended from the federal government, promptly distributed directly to our untold number of small companies. These hard-working Oregonians have done absolutely everything that we've asked, yet they are collapsing before our eyes, and as more time is wasted. If we have no choice but to continue with lockdowns, then we have to give them hope and resources until the coronavirus surge subsides. Please, no more talking. Instead, let's take decisive action that we all know cannot be delayed. Small business is the key to the COVID pandemic recovery, and the best path to block the increasing poverty we're now starting to witness. Save our families, save our liberties, save our employers, save our culture, and save Oregon. If 2021 is truly to be a vastly improved year over 2010, then we got to immediately refocus. Thank you. So I've got copies of this for everybody. That's all I have. I mean, there's several little things that I could report to the citizens, and, but in response to her executive order, which again, this county has, our people have done everything we've asked, our people here in this building is, 99% have done everything that we've asked, our businesses, our schools, our churches, all the above. And it's simple. Redirect some of that $800 million so we can keep these businesses afloat. So I think that's all I have. Hang on one minute. Right now, we're up to 271 positive cases in Curry County. That's all I'm going to report on that for today. And I do, oh my goodness, I do have one apology to a World War II veteran that turned 100. I thought that Ken Dubay, lifetime friend, 96, was the only one still living in Curry County. So I have reached out to Charles Barnett to apologize, as he turned 100, and we're going to get him in here by George and honor him. And I have one more here from Sequoia. I want to read Sequoia Contracting. This is grant money that's available to Curry businesses, and I hope that there's people listening that might want to take a serious look at this. It's to me from Rachel Matic Hughes. Happy New Year. I wanted to reach out to let you know that right now, just received this this morning, by the way, Business Oregon has a pot of funding of up to $500,000 for small business grants, up to five FTE full-time employees per county. Do you have interest in applying for this? Sherry, that's her assistant, and I could not only apply for you, but then also work to set up an application process. I believe you'd have a partner with a local bank to do the actual grant, but we could run that through CCD. I believe you'd have a partner with a local bank to do the actual grant, but we could run that through CCD again. Economic Coordinator Madison has not seen this yet, I don't think. She was not, yeah. But this could bring in sufficient funding for the small businesses in Curry County because many counties just got an influx of funding from the state. There may not be as much competition for these dollars as normal. If you're interested, I'd like to set up a call with your local Business Oregon rep, which would be Sean Stevens. So we can, I assume anyway, we can understand any potential restrictions. I know that we don't have a contract yet, but I am const, meaning Curry County and Sequoia Consulting, on the lookout for funding for rural communities in Oregon, and I wanted to pass this on. Kind regards. So the reason, and I put this on your desk this morning, it just came in this morning. She's willing to go to Bad Forest. This would be actually the fourth time I've mentioned her company. I think she charges 175 an hour, maybe it's 125. I don't remember, but she's worth it. And if she wants to take the lead on this with the restaurants in particular that are really wounded right now and fighting, not knowing how they're going to pay their bills. I'd like to have a consensus of the board that we could, it probably needs to be an action item, but there is no time to waste. No more time to waste. So council, how, how can we proceed on this if there's board agreement?
Proceed on, what is it you're looking at again?
Just to have her start the process for looking, looking at this funding and see how Curry County can apply and then putting the applications out to the local businesses. I mean, this is not, this is not complicated. It's, it's money that's there and we're not competing. Like I say, this is the fourth time I've brought, and, and same thing with Park Resources. We don't have a grant rider. It has really hurt us long-term. So.
So we're under Commissioner Comments, right?
Yeah, but I, this is the only time I could bring it up because it wasn't on the agenda.
I see, okay. And this, you say it's the fourth time we've looked at it. So this is the.
Excuse me, the fourth time that we could have taken the services and contracted out with Sequoia Consulting.
Yeah, and so I think the prior times, you ask how it would be done, the prior times we actually had a, I thought we had a possible agreement that was proposed. And so I think just getting that agreement back in front of the board for consideration would be the way to do it.
Well, I don't remember that we did have an agreement. I think we did have considerable discussion. But it was, I think the final on that was no payment unless we get the grant. Words to that effect, so I don't, I don't know. I just don't see this as high, high risk at all. And, but I'll, you know, to try and, and, and give her this option to see how she does for our county. Again, she had tremendous recommendations from Lynn County, Lincoln County. She's got them a lot of, she's got them a lot of help, a lot of funds. And we, we lost out over three months now.
If, I really think with Sequoia Consulting that we did have an agreement that was brought back to the board. I, I felt like I was tasked with working on it and putting something together, but let me just see if I can't.
Council, could we maybe just consider bringing it back Wednesday? If you, if you give you some reasonable time on this?
I tell you what, that's fair. I, what I will do if it's, if it's the consensus of the board is I will bring back, I will look at my file on Sequoia and if there is an agreement or something of that nature, I'll, I'll bring that to the board for consideration.
Great, that's all I have. And then I'm going to ask the board to please review this again because it's, it's potentially some great success for Curry County and I, again, low risk. Thank you, board.
Do you want to do the workshop next and then come back for my comments or?
No, I think we're okay if.
Okay, well, I.
Take it up to you.
I'll tell you what, I have, I have a question from county council. I think we need, I, I need to ask the board something in executive session. That's very important. So I'm wondering if we could go into executive session. It would be one question about something that I think is imperative to this county and then we can come back out and I would forego my comments to do that.
So the question would involve getting legal advice from council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's 192-6602. I think it's F, which is matters that are exempt from public disclosure. And that's attorney-client privilege information. So we can, I think we have a blank executive session listed on the agenda. So if that's the will of the board, we can do that.
So to the audience, we really are going to try and be within five minutes.
It's one question that'll take a minute.
The worst part is that even though you say it'll take a minute, I have to go get the disc and we flip that out. I'm thinking, I liked your first idea. Adjourn, go to the workshop, do the workshop, come back and.
That's fine with me.
Recede, go to the workshop. So if that, I, I mean, again, it's, I had a nod over here. Commissioner Boyce, you tracking that? Is that?
Yes, so you like going to the workshop, so we can recess this meeting. And, but we're probably going to go into executive session after the workshop.
Right, we'll come back.
Go back and reconvene, okay.
Reconvene, then exec session, then out of that, and then back into public and close or what have you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned and. Recessed, okay, thank you. And we are, we got one minute to spare for our workshop.
So we don't get up?